Order. Uh, we have an invitation tonight with Pastor Spencer Beach from Building Church.
Let's pray together. Father God, we thank you for this incredible opportunity to be together. We thank you for every man and woman represented in this room tonight that represents the citizens, our residents, elected officials in our great city. Pray tonight for divine wisdom, Lord, for our mayor, for every council person that's here. We pray, God, that you would give us the wisdom and direction to lead this great city in the way that you would have it to go. We ask you, Lord, for safety and protection to be upon every person here. Let us have health, strength, and abundant life. We thank you, Lord, for your grace upon us and your strength to do what you've asked us to do in a way that you're asking us to do it. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thanks Pastor. Y'all join me in that in the place, please. Can I get the roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Here. Yeah.
Here.
It looks like we got a quorum, so we'll move forward. Any changes we need to make to the agenda tonight?
Need to make one change. Item E. Basically. Not OMI would need that.
Who? All right. That's it. We'll move to approval of amendments for minutes of March 10.
Approved.
Motion and second. We have any discussion? Now, can I get the vote, please?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And motion passes. And now for the minutes from March 8.
Approved.
Motion and second. Any discussion? I get the vote, please.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Next move into presentation and awards. We have a couple tonight, and the first one is from Mickey Bennett of Marf.
Hi. Do I need to state my name and address?
Get hurt.
Okay. Mickey Bennett, Director of Marf, 1277 Douglas Road, Huntsville, Alabama. I am here to, I don't really have a presentation, but just to let you guys know what we plan to do with the approb- appropriation money for Marf that you so graciously approved. Um, the first thing we do is we span neuter any animal that comes out of animal control with additional funds that helps us cover the cost of all their other vaccinations, um, any treatments, heartworm treatments, um, skin issues, anything that comes up. And we also, when we have room, um, take from the community of Madison for people that, um, can no longer keep their pets. And of course, we provide the same level of care for all of our animals and put them in foster homes and get them adopted.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Ms. Sharon Willis, TEC Director.
First off, I want to say thank you so much to Mayor Finley and to this wonderful group of council members for approving, uh, the appro- appropriations for the enrichment center. Uh, we've been with the enrichment, I've been with the enrichment center since I great, since I left Madison City Schools in 2016 as their director. And, um, we have been so fortunate to put counselors in the schools in the city of Madison. Right now, we're serving all 11 schools plus the pre-K center. Uh, last year, and this year's been a challenge, but we rose to that challenge and are continuing to make our individual sessions just as many as we did in the previous years. Through August and December, we've already had 1,171 individual sessions for students. Uh, anytime the schools were closed, we continued through a, through a HIPAA compliant, um, platform where we could actually counsel those students virtually. And that has proven to be, in Madison City especially, the elementary students' parents really wanted to have us there for their students. So we've been so wonderful to be able to do that. And we appreciate so much what the board has done. You've helped us to keep five full-time counselors in the schools and two part-time counselors. So with seven counselors, we're serving 11 schools. And I anticipate growth, of course, because of the new elementary school that'll be, um, opening up. And I know Ms. Bartlett and Ms. Spears are really glad they're not at the zoning meetings tonight. I sat through a few of those, too. But again, we appreciate the appropriation. And we will continue. That's exactly what we do with the funding is we don't charge families anything for our services, not anything. And we're there in the schools so we can help any child at any time that needs us, along with crisis situations. We're there. And again, like I said, we are so grateful to be there and grateful to the city of Madison for the funding appropriation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. That's all the presentation awards that we have. We'll move into public comments, and the only person we have signed up tonight is Ms. Eva Bryce.
Good evening. I have some, a map. Can I pass out? I brought copies for each council member.
Absolutely.
Do you mind giving us your address, too, please?
My name is Eva Bryce, 112 Elmswell Court in the Crown Point community. I apologize, the maps are not the most excellent, but hopefully you can orient yourselves from them. Um, I've lived here for four years with my husband and three children. We have a second grader at Columbia, a sixth grader at Discovery, and a freshman at Bob Jones. I'm here because I'd like to ask the city to consider prioritizing sidewalk installation on Gillespie spaces where it does not currently exist. Um, there are currently three areas which are really in need of sidewalks from approximately Angela Drive to a little past Crown Point, from, uh, Crown Point to Balch Gillespie intersection, and from Walden Preserve to County Line Road. I originally had intended to only ask about sidewalk from Crown Point to Angela Drive because my son wants to walk to school and I won't let him because that's such a narrow area. Um, but I talked to a lot of residents in our neighborhood and they all really felt that there were more places on that road that need access to pedestrians. Um, Madison is a great place to live because we have such wonderful amenities. Um, but Madison is growing exponentially, and with that growth, we have a lot more traffic. As an avid runner and a cyclist, I am keenly aware that drivers don't always keep an eye out for us. And for those walking on Gillespie, like I said, there is no real safe place for them to walk on that narrow sho- shoulder, excuse me. Um, installing these sections of sidewalk would increase safety and access for all residents of Madison. Uh, it would allow things that make Madison desirable to be, uh, to be more connected, playgrounds, green spaces, walking paths, and schools. Um, I'd just ask if you could please consider to make those installation of sidewalks a higher priority to, um, increase safety for all Madison residents. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody that signed up? All right. Anybody else that would like to? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Reed Carpenter. I live at 142 Whisperwood Lane here in Madison. Lived here for 11 years now. Love it. I understand from the minutes that there was, uh, on the working session that there's some brouhaha about putting traffic lights in town Madison. And looking at the map and looking at the area, instead of folks, you know, circling around the drain about who is supposed to put it in and who's going to be responsible for putting it in, if it was in a contract or not, may I suggest a roundabout? Put a roundabout at that intersection. We already have big fans of roundabouts here in Madison. They are the most efficient way to move traffic through those areas. And when the power goes out, they still work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Rachel Gray. I'm a resident at 108 Gilbert, G.I.L.B.E.R.T. Lane here in Madison. I am a native, so, and it's nice to see some of my councilmen and women here tonight. I have a question for the mayor, sir. Tommy Battle has suggested both via phone call and with his office that he may create a separate mask mandate once the safer-at-home order expires April 9. And there was an article released by WHNT saying that you would collaborate with the Huntsville mayor should he extend that mandate. Sir, will you be extending a mask mandate after the ninth expiration? And if your answer is yes, what recourse does the council have to reject that extension? Thank you.
That's a great question, and I had that on my list to kind of follow up with folks on. If I can wait to answer your question when it's my turn to speak, I'll absolutely address that. You betcha.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
The agenda. Uh, I've mentioned something about this before at the toilets for the Greenways. Uh, uh, $90,000 is what they cost, and we're putting two items, two items out of the Greenways. You know, my family used to go camping way back yonder. We never had toilets around when we walked out in the trails or went camping. I don't understand. I mean, evidently the people in Madison are not as nasty tough as they, what they, what they used to be. I don't know. I just think that's too much money to be spent on Greenwood, on that part of a Greenway. Also, uh, on your M3 thing here, when you talk about, uh, this, in this money in memory of, the man's name is Doc, D.O.C., Doc Murk. The extended agenda, it looked like M, uh, D.O.E., but it's Doc.
Man.
I knew him when his name arrived.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Callahan, 120 Corrine Drive. I'd just like to say a few things, acknowledgements. First, uh, roundabouts, I'm a big fan. I've lived in a lot of places where roundabouts carry traffic at a much greater pace. Um, well, much greater volume, I'll say, not much greater pace. Um, and they, and they work. So I hope we can go forward and do that. But I also understand the brouhaha over, um, whose money should be spent to do that. Um, that's, and that's really, you know, that goes back to my question I've been asking about ramps that are going in on the westbound, potentially going in on the westbound I-565. And I'd still like to know at what time, what date did the city know that there was not enough money in the buckets for the westbound I-565 ramps to be finished? And I would ask, uh, either the mayor or Councilman Shaw, since you were both here at the, during that timeframe, um, can you give me a date when we knew that, when bids came in and we knew that there was not enough money to do those ramps?
Did you get the email from Ms. Spears today?
I did not. I've been at Madison House.
I sent it this afternoon.
Sent you one this afternoon that has that information. I don't think we have an exact date, Mike, but it gives you the hierarchy, hierarchy isn't the right word, the, um, timeframes of-
Chronology.
Chronology. There you go. Thank you, Ms. Spears, of when that came about. And I think whatever date it was that they say that the bids came in at the numbers that they did, it's within one or two weeks of that date, and I don't have that num- that, that in-
I'm sorry, I was, I was-
It's okay. It's, it's kind of took us a while to get a lot of that information, too, but we did send it.
Um, so then the other thing is on the sidewalks and, you know, installation of sidewalks, because that, that also relates. You spend a lot of money on, you know, economic development. I come- I come from a place up in New York where economic development is go help people in the Rust Belt where there's not jobs. You know, what we're talking about is trying to develop retail uh cash flow for the city. Which, you know, that, to me, that's not economic development. We call it economic development, but I don't, uh, you know, if people want to go spend their money and a business has a good plan, then fine. Let the business come here and help them with some standard things. But begging businesses and giving money to businesses to do that kind of stuff is something I don't believe we should be doing. I think we should be spending the citizens' tax money on amenities for, for citizens. So I'd just like to say, I think those sidewalks are sorely needed. You know, I'm a, I'm a cyclist. I ride everywhere around the city. I'm not afraid to ride on shoulderless roads. I just, I take the right away where, where I can, where I feel like I have to. But you would get so many more people to use the facilities and, and, but please, on the other hand. Don't separate the facilities like we, like we've tried to do in some places. Don't separate bicycle facilities and lump them with pedestrians. Because that's a recipe for disaster. And I'll just go back and say, you know, Mayor and I have had a discussion a long time ago about what was done on County Line Road with bicycle paths. And I can tell you, I've got, you know, I don't ride generally on the path on, on County Line Road unless it's convenient for me. Because there are 80-something stop signs on the bicycle path on a three-mile stretch of road. 80-something stops. And it makes no sense. Bicycle is a lane of tre, the bicycle lane is a lane of travel and it should be marked just the way the other lanes of travel are. It's confusing and it's dangerous. And I've asked about that before, but I guess when I complained about the stadium, somebody decided that that wasn't something that they were going to take their time on. They, they had to resolve my complaints on the stadium. I'd like to see something be done about that finally. And then finally, um, we used to have a policy, the city used to have a policy where if a builder developer came into a place and tore up some of the infrastructure. Whether it be uh the path infrastructures or sidewalk infrastructures or what have you. They would at least have to do a temporary replacement to make those facilities usable by the citizens. And um on, on the path on County Line Road, there's that one lot that was, you know, thrown into the edge of the wetland. And I understand, you know, somebody owns that property and they want to make money off of it and all that's good stuff. But somebody dug up, they dug up the path. They just tore up the path, tore out the curb and they've thrown some rocks and mud in there. But it's not usable by the average person. Have to get down there, have to get off their, get off their bicycle, get across it. And it can be done, but it's an inconvenience and you generally wouldn't do that to drivers unless you had to.
I'll give the code about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
This is further to the question about masks and the mask mandate.
Ma'am, could you give us your name, please, and your address?
Teresa Frakes, 110 Gilbert Lane. I know that you are all intelligent people and you've heard a lot of these arguments before. But I would like to give a personal light to it. I've been sitting here, I believe what I saw in the captioning said that you're going to be discussing later on the extension. I think that's what I saw.
Yes, ma'am.
What I need to say is I'm hard of hearing. Madison is a young community, but it's also an old community. I'm not the only old lady here. On December the 11th last year, three squad cars and four cops pulled up in front of my neighbor's house. And got out of their cars and were looking at my house. I used to be a cop. So I'm there, I'm not afraid of them. So I went out front to see what they wanted. All four of them held masks over their face. And I was truly not able to hear what they said. What they were there for was to tell me that my son, Luke Maxine Bornetsky, had been killed in Birmingham. The day before that, December 10th. I knew better than to ask them to take their masks off so that I could understand better. Because I knew they're police officers and they're going to get in trouble if they take their masks off, period. So that's Madison. In early February, we drove to Birmingham to Jefferson County Courthouse for the preliminary hearing. Yet, there was only one police officer testifying. He is, no offense, very southern, had an accent, was soft spoken. I have a right to know what happened to my son when he was killed. He was stabbed, decapitated and set on fire. It's kind of an emotional day. And so I got, even with a microphone, 50% of what he said. I would just like when you consider mask mandate. I would like for you to remember, there's people like me out here, a lot of us, who can't understand what you're saying. You want to know, unless I can lip read. And I'm not even deaf. I'm only old and hard of hearing. All I have.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, ma'am.
Anyone else like to address council? All right, we'll move into the constituent agenda and finance committee report.
Eddie.
Eddie, you got to talk to your mic, buddy.
Ain't nobody can hear you.
Mask or no mask?
Yeah. So we, we went over the consent agenda individually and we, we looked at it. If you had a question about um generator, I think you got that answered. Um, also um about the donations. Got to get my glasses on for this. Katie Packer gave $20 to the fire department. Chambers Bottling gave uh $22 to the fire department. And the donation from Charles and Patricia Campbell in memory of Doc Murphy for the senior centers, senior sitter Mills on Wheels program. Um, also, there was a generator. They use um A-L-T. That's.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any, any discussion? I get the votes, please.
Aye.
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 Ah.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move into presentation and reports and start with the mayor.
All right, and I'll start by asking for su, uh, support for Council of Resolution Number 2021-88-R approving the annual appropriation agreement with the Madison Animal Rescue Foundation, or Marsh. For the FY21 appropriation, the amount of $15,000 to be paid from the general fund.
Second.
Motion and second. Vote, please.
Aye.
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 Ah.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. And ask for council approval of Resolution Number 2021-89-R approving the annual appropriation agreement with the enrichment center for their 20 FY21 appropriation. And the amount of $10,000 to be paid from the general fund.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-89-R. Second.
Motion and second. I can vote, please.
Aye.
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 Ah.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, and then two quick things, both of which folks are here to talk about. The first is the mask mandate. And as you guys can imagine, and as I've talked about for basically a year now, there is a spectrum of people and their beliefs as far as masking. That goes from, I cannot believe we don't wear a mask for the rest of our lives, even to bed. To, I hope we never have to wear a mask again and we shouldn't be wearing it and the science proves that it's not helping. Regardless of how you feel, the governor, as of April 9th, will lift the mask mandate for the state of Alabama. And go to a more recommended or preferred for each respective area and then leave it up to, I think, the rest respective cities and counties. If we go back and remember the county, Madison County Health Board was the ones who in essence uh put a positive yes to mask mandates. About the time that the governor was going to do it anyway, a little bit before that. And that's sort of for the county and part of the reason we keep talking about continuing to talk with Mayor Battle, Chairman Strong. And the county health board is at least listening to what they will be doing. And if they will continue that or back off as the governor did. I can tell you from a city standpoint, I do not believe going forward from a masking standpoint. That we should do anything other than what the governor says unless two things happen. One, we still have two to three weeks to get there, get through Easter and, and get through uh spring break. And our numbers are down right now. And if they stay down, then I don't see why we wouldn't do the very same thing that the governor has said. And look to each individual business and/or facility to make their own respective decision on whether they want to have masking or not. But I also will be discussing that with Chairman Strong, Mayor Battle and our, our Madison Health Board. To listen to why they would feel like we needed to do something different. And of course, that board can enforce or put something in place for our county. So just to let everybody know and be clear, lastly and most importantly for us as a collective body, I'll be talking with council and each individual person to get their feedback as far as what they've seen. And as importantly, heard from our respective constituents. Because there is a spectrum of what they believe. There's a spectrum right now from a council standpoint as far as what they feel like and believe. Obviously, I love the fact that the governor went five more weeks. It gave us the ability to get more vaccinations. It gets us through some of the times when people are going to be together. And so that's kind of where we stand right now. So at this point, again, if, if we get to April 9th, numbers stay the same. We continue to see a downward trend. We get more vaccinations and we don't have anything major come out of the county. We would most likely do the same thing that the governor has done and go to a recommended or preferred stats. So that's where we stand on mask mandating. As far as the, the ramps, um, Mike, you'll see in your email that, that you got some information. Bottom line is, you know, the county, they, they did bids for those ramps. They came in with the lowest bid of 28 million, I think a high bid of about 35 million. And that was probably in spring. We've known since that time of those numbers. What we weren't willing to do was ask council at that time, just bump that number from 40 to 58 million. And let's just go ahead and let the, the developer spend that much more money to get the ramps. While yes, they committed to getting them done, there's also a, a responsible number that we had to look at from a council mayor standpoint of what we were willing to investigate. So since that time, as a city and working with the developer, we've gone to every other channel, both federal and state that we can find. Where we can secure additional revenues that we wouldn't have to spend, that others would help us with. While still holding the developer who's responsible for that accountable. Um, because they are the ones who signed up to get the entire interchange done, not only with the city, but also with the Alabama Department of Transportation. So as you guys know, and it's been reported, uh, once we had uh the meeting on the 25th. Um, that wasn't the genesis of us working to ask Aldat to possibly change and open the ride-in, ride-out. Without the full interchange completely figured out in finance. We're still at that point, but we did ask the governor to intervene to at least ask Aldat when the developer had everything possible that they could do. Ready to give to Aldat to expedite that process. They have, Aldat has been wonderful to work with. We've had conversations in tune this morning and uh the developer is very close to having everything that they need done to get those ramps opened. And so we will continue to work on the different funding pieces that would help us as a city minimize the amount of money that needs to be spent. And the last piece I'll say is, because I had a conversation, a great conversation with a citizen who took me up on my offer of 30 minutes to sit down with anything that you want in more detail. And the one thing that came out of that is we probably haven't done as good a job as we could from up here to, to make sure folks understand. The developer is the one who has spent the money. The developer has spent probably about 30 to 32 million dollars of, 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 of money to do everything that needed to be done in town Madison to this point. The city has agreed to pay it back, uh, or the developer gets paid back through anything new that comes out of the ground from a sales tax and property tax standpoint. So it's not the city that spent that, it's the developer. And in turn, for anything to change, for any other agreement that needs to be done, this council would have to have the data that they needed. And it would probably be that there's enough revenue where we're making more money than the bond would cost to bond that. Very similar to what we did with Target. Target Shops of Madison up there, we in essence agreed to pay 6.5 million dollars bonded. That means we paid back about 8.1 million dollars. We did it over a 12-year period. The bond payment was $900,000 a year. Right now, that generates over $2 million a year in sales tax revenues for the cities and the schools. And it goes away next year where we'll then have the ability to do something more with that money. So I think Mike's point is always good that, you know, we, we've worked diligently to hold the, the developer accountable to what they agreed to do. Uh, but we also are looking to anything that we can possibly do to minimize the amount of money that the city has to invest to get the full interchange completed. And so again, I'll, I'll, I'll end by saying, if any, anybody wants to come in, take 30 minutes to sit down and talk in more detail about any of these subjects, we will gladly do that. Um, you just have to call the mayor's office and, and schedule one of those appointments. They're, they're, they're ready for the citizens. And with that said, that's all I have.
All right, very good. Start on the other end this week and start with number seven.
All right, uh, first thing I'll mention is, uh, Ms. Bryce, thank you for coming and talking about sidewalks. And we'll say over the past couple of years, I think we've reprioritized a lot of sidewalk projects, actually invested in our public works. Cruising facilities, we're able to do a lot of those projects in-house. I know you've seen sidewalk you mentioned on Gillespie. There are areas where we've been able to actually focus on not just functionality of folks being able to get out, but also look at areas where uh the investment also enables kids to get to school. I know we added one, um, I can't remember the name of the road, but it's Joe Phillips or something like that to uh maybe a question or something. So folks from uh water preserve and even parts of Liberty and all, and those areas can now get to um Liberty Middle going through that. So I, you know, I see that every morning. As the springtime comes in, you'll see a lot more of those sidewalk projects commence. Thank you for referencing these are the ones we can obviously hopper as we go forward and look at where do we want to invest those dollars going through. I would say bear with us, uh, right now, mother, we're kind of at mother nature's beck and call on uh, on trying to get those things accomplished. Kent and his crew, they're amazing job with getting those sidewalks in, so. I appreciate your passion in that, in that area. I will say though, as a, as an avid runner myself, um, you can actually now, and I think it's pretty cool, you can get from Hughes Road all the way to County Line. Yes, you have to cross Waltrana and you have to cross uh Hughes, uh, but you can actually do that now going through neighborhoods. And on those multi-use paths, you could actually run a, a full marathon now going through those areas. Yeah. It's pretty, pretty cool. I just started bicycling, so I'm trying to learn all that. But I do, I, I did actually have to go through that little rock path the other day. I don't have a mountain bike, so it's kind of interesting. With that being said, I do want to, I'll do some advertising here for, for Parks and Rec. So uh this Saturday from um, oh gosh, at 9:00 AM and 10:30. Uh, 9:00 AM for ages one through five and 10:30 ages six through 10. We have an Easter extravaganza planned up at Dublin Park. we have an Easter extravaganza planned up at Dublin Park. Free shuttle service from Bob Jones to the North parking lot. Handicap only, handicap parking only is at Dublin Park. So if you're not handicapped, please don't come to Dublin Park and want a park. We do have a rain alternative that is a drive-through hunt. So I guess in that case, if it's raining and you're not handicapped, come up there. But that'll be nine until 11 or until supplies last. So it's all on the website if you go to madisonal.gov backslash special events, or you can call the Dublin facility. Corey, I assume this is not your personal number. 256-772-9300 for more information. They always put on a good show and a good time for the kiddos. So I want out there if you've got time to do that this Saturday. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. District number six.
It's really strange not being clean up for a change. All right, first Zoom, again, over 1,300 people watched the last city council meeting. I think that's so wonderful. I'm so glad people are using that service and watching us. I know we're not must-see TV, so I really do appreciate spending your time with us and learning. I think that's great. The Police Citizens Advisory Committee, currently 47 have applied. I think that's wonderful. We still would really like more. So if you're interested at all, please go to the website, get an application, fill it out. You never know. We really are looking for people that want to make a difference in this community to really bring the communications up between the police and the citizens. I just totally support this, and the more people that apply, the better. So, and thank you to all those that have. Also, on Saturday, I was able to participate in the flag retirement ceremony. It was put together by Josh Schwimmscher. Sorry if I missed your name up, but he was a wonderful, he was from Troop 7083. It was the Eagle Scout Project. Over 100 flags were retired. If you've ever had the opportunity to do this, it's very solemn. It's a wonderful thing. And he also remembered the service of 18 of the veterans that live here in Madison, and he had made plaques for them. It was very marvelous. So I just want to commend him for doing that project. One last thing is the mask. A lot of people have voiced their concerns on it, and I appreciate what Mayor said. I just, in the last year, we've become very cognizant of the health risks that is out there with this COVID. And I think we've learned a lot, and we have that knowledge. And I believe as individuals that we can be responsible and that we can make the decisions for our own health, but also be cognizant of the health of others. And if you see, you know, I think we can lift the mandate yet be responsible. If you're a business owner and you have health issues, certainly put up a sign. And hopefully, I would really think citizens would be very respectful of that, and they will continue to wear their mask in those situations. So I think there is a way, like Mayor said, for both things to happen here. But I really believe that we've grown so much as a city that we can handle this, and people would be respectful if you wear it because you need to, and people would be respectful if you wear it if you don't have a high risk and you've already had it, or you've had your vaccination. There's so many other options. So that's just my feelings on it. I think we can, we can do this as a group people. I also want to thank Mayor for his comments on the flyovers. I appreciated that you explained all of that to us. You explained where we stand, where the developer stands, and I think that's, that's great. So thank you very much. And I do believe that's all. Thank you.
Very good. District number five.
I have some big thank yous for Chief Bailey, Gary Chinowith, Jason Leggett from Madison Utilities, and Samantha Magnuson, who helped conduct a town hall on March 11th. Here in council chambers and via Zoom, we were discussing Highland Drive and the projects that are occurring there and our plans for repaving. And I was so pleased at the participation at that town hall. This room was completely full, and on Zoom, we had over 30 people attending. And because of the presentations and the explanations that were made, I think we actually answered some of the questions that people had. I had some very thoughtful emails come back after that, and we were able to post the video and post the presentations and an FAQ page so that people who missed it or may have been out on spring break, you still have time to review that information, send us your thoughts. And then we're going to come back and report back on what modifications to the plan might be necessary. But the comments have been so thoughtful, and people were so thankful. They, some of the comments were along the lines of just the fear of the unknown was handled so well through the town hall, and so they were just glad to have the information. And so thank you all for who participated, either answering questions or asking them. I really appreciate that. And second, I'm going to start a shop local spotlight. And so I'm out and about a lot in Madison, and I like to promote new businesses that are out there. I ran across a new place called Beacon Hill Nutrition on Old Madison Pike. If you've ever been to where Greg Machen is in that shopping center, they're opening up some new shops. And so I stopped by Beacon Hill, and in front of me, I have a dollar off coupons. So anyone here who would like to grab one before the end of the meeting, please feel free to do that. And I just want to encourage everyone to shop local. Thanks.
Very good. District number three.
So tonight, I'm going to be presenting the mid-year budget. First of all, I'd like to thank all the department heads who go through these budgets and tear down your, what you need, not what you want in the beginning of the year. And, you know, with projections from Cameron, they're always conservative, so better with our tax revenues, which allows us to pay for cash for things in the middle of the year sometimes. That's kind of what we've done. Again, I'd like to thank the mayor, the office, too, for getting everything together. Most of the, you know, I guess, important departments when it comes to this is finance. So Roger couldn't be here, but I'd like to thank you. So this year, what we did again is, like I say, our projections on revenue were ultra-conservative. They came in better than we thought they were at mid-year, so we're able to move some money around. And we're moving money from the general fund into the capital asset budget. We're going to be paying for a new knuckle boom truck for trash. And also a dump truck that we've tried to replace for the last three years. It's a vehicle that no one has parts for, so we're able to get that out of the fleet and get another one in that we can. So that's, that's. The other thing is we added appropriations.
Sure. So the appropriation we added is with Thrives. One of the things that they requested, $100,000 over, well, I think they take it every year, but a four-year period. But what we presented in the budget, and if council approves tonight, would be a $25,000 appropriation. What Thrive has done over the course of the last six to eight, that's not even true, a year, is help with testing, COVID testing. And in many instances, it's getting the testing done at folks that have trouble getting to the testing facilities or high-risk folks. What they're now going to be doing is helping with the, not injection, what is it? Vaccination, sorry, my mind, the vaccinations in getting that done is one more avenue in a way that we can get that done. So using some of our COVID money that was given to us from the state in a way that helps a larger pool of citizens, that's the only outside appropriation that we added, and it was for $25,000.
And so the last thing, again, generally, the way we're moving money is we're paying bonds, we're paying things with bond funds. It's not we're able to pay for cash. Just, that's the highlights of what we've done. That's the other website.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I want to add just two quick things. First, when we, in rebudgeting and reanalyzing, the estimation for additional revenues is about $3 million more in revenues that we originally had projected. The cost of the knuckle boom and the dump truck are about $450,000. In addition, from, you know, adding some different pieces within the budget, we only added about $400,000 more, so still very conservative. And then one of the biggest things that we, that we are, that we've done is typically each year, we have all the money that comes in from sales tax and property tax that helps us pay our bonds. And the money that comes in is usually more than we need to pay those bonds off. And in many instances, to supplement our general fund, we brought bond money into the general fund. Many years ago, it was as much as $3 million. We weaned that down to $2 million this year. At the mid-year, we will only ask, or basically bring over $500,000, leaving another million and a half dollars in the bond fund. And what that is used for is the larger capital improvement projects. So I know one of the things the council will be looking to do at one of our next work sessions is restart the project list for our capital improvement projects using bond money that we have available to spend on some of the larger projects, whether it's sidewalks, whether it's roads, whether it's roundabouts. So I'm really proud of the fact that not only is it a conservative budget, but we're kind of weaning ourselves away from needing to support the general fund budget with bond money, which is making a big difference for our citizens. And I'll end by saying, the knuckle boom truck is an example. We contract that out to another company to do a lot of the garbage collection, the green trash collection. But Kent and his team, in many instances, when it comes to storms, you know, it's a perfect example. They, they need equipment that works. That knuckle boom truck is old. And so we kind of want versus need. But one of the things we're able to do because of this budget is get them something they can depend on. So when Republic gets behind and we have to pick some things up, when people do illegal dumping, or when there's a storm, they're in a much better position to take care of our citizens. So a lot of other things that are in that budget. Roger did a fantastic job again, and our city, and our department heads continue to take care of what do we need, not what do we want. And I'm very proud of that.
All right. I get to vote, please.
Aye.
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 And motion passed. So you got Teddy? All right, we'll go to district number two.
The only thing I have is I wanted to bring up the school board applications. We are going to be interviewing for school board in the near future. And I think Greg's going to give us the timeline on all that. But we don't have very many applications this year. And the deadline is April the 2nd. If you are interested in becoming involved with our city and our schools, now is the time to step up and apply. And I'm sure Ms. Bartley would echo me in saying that this is some of the most rewarding work you can do in our city. And that's all I have.
Number one.
Yes, I'm going to tag on to that because I've started to get some emails about rezoning because citizens are not always aware of who makes what decision. And as Ms. Spears mentioned, we do select the school board member. We do not have any input whatsoever in rezoning. That's through the superintendent and through the Board of Education. So I would encourage citizens, if they have positive or negative feedback or just want to share their thoughts, to reach out to the schools, and their website is different than ours. So if you need that, we can get that for you. But I also wanted to echo what Councilmember Denzine said. Ron and I also attended the ceremony on Saturday, and it was very moving, and it was wonderful. And we all got to participate and hold the flags. Didn't let us go near the fire, which was probably good. And it was just a wonderful ceremony. And if you missed it, on Friday, April 5th, Bob Jones will be having their flag retirement ceremony. And so if you have a flag or know of a neighbor that has a flag that needs to be disposed of, the proper way to do it is to burn it. You can drop that off at the front office at Bob Jones anytime between now and April 5th. I also wanted to extend my thanks to Parks and Rec and to the mayor's office. The trash bin, dog waste station, and bench have been installed on the new Mill Creek Greenway extension. And I've already gotten a lot of positive feedback, just how wonderful that is and what a great start it is to our greenways and appreciate the efforts on both of those departments. And that's all I have.
All right. I have a couple of items tonight. One, in the past several weeks, we've had public comments on Zoom and live. And the timeframes, when you, if you call in in advance, it's five minutes. And if you come up to the stand, it's three. And as council president and to run the meetings, it's my job to keep everybody in order. If council wants to change those time limits, we can. But moving forward, I'm going to have to hold everybody accountable to those timeframes. I've gotten several complaints that some people get their, they do their speeches for that three minutes or five minutes, and then other people talk for seven, eight, nine, 10 minutes. And so to keep everything fair, we'll hold everybody accountable to those timeframes. If council wants to change that at some point, we can vote on it and change it, but that's the standard as of now. So we'll be moving, we'll hold that accountability moving forward. The other things that I have is the Madison Citizens Police Advisory Committee. Like, it was said earlier, there was 47 people submitted to date, 12 incomplete applications. So if you've turned one in and you've got, and it's been rejected, you can refill that out and do that. But our deadlines are April 2nd will be the deadline. Decision from mayor and council will make our decisions on April 16th. And then on April 26th will be the announcement of the committee members. We'll get this on the website, too. We'll be able to get all this out. And then for the Board of Education, we've only had six people to apply. So our application deadline for that is April 2nd also. Council interview interest information will be April 9th, and then we will interview on the 21st, and then we'll make a decision probably a week or so after that. So we'll get these dates up, but any kind of applications, they're definitely due by April 2nd. So please get them in. With that, that's all I have. We will move into public hearings. Your best.
You have two public hearings this evening. They're both for zoning, single-family properties that have also requested annexation into the city. The first item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2021-27. This is for a property in Morris Estates. It's about three quarters of an acre. There's an existing home on it. And the property owners requesting R1A zoning if the property is annexed. And as you can see from that graphic above, as properties have annexed in from, in Morris Estates subdivision, they've all been zoned R1A because that's our zoning category that best fits those properties. Planning Commission and staff are recommending approval. There weren't any comments at the Planning Commission meeting.
Got to open it. With that, I'd like to open the public hearing. Does anyone like to address council? If not, I'll close public hearings. Motion and second. Any discussion? I get to vote, please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. The next item is Proposed Ordinance 2021-29. And this is also a single-family lot. This one is located on the other side of the city in Skyline Acres subdivision. And this property is about a third of an acre. The owners are currently building a home on that lot. And this property would be zoned R2 upon annexation. And you can see that there's a variety of different zoning categories in Skyline Acres. But lately, any of the properties that have annexed in have been zoned R2 because, again, that zoning category best fits those property dimensions. Planning Commission and staff are recommending approval, excuse me. And there weren't any comments at the public hearing, at the Planning Commission meeting.
Move to approve. Oh, public hearing.
I'd like to open the public hearing. Does anyone like to address council? I'll close public hearing.
Move to approve.
Seconds.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
No.
I get to vote, please. We had a motion and a second.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ah.
And Stella passes.
Thank you.
Engineering.
And I just have to say, before Gary says anything, this is something I've been waiting for years for, so excited.
Yeah, 13, 14 years ago, I suggested roundabouts. And seven of eight people sitting up here said, never.
Well, you had to get the right buttons.
There's been a change.
Yes, or the better.
I've got two items today. And one of them, I'm requesting approval for Resolution Number 2021-97-R, awarding a bid for the Balch Gillespie Roundabout Project to Wiregrass Construction in the amount of $523,488.95 to be paid out of our department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any any discussion?
Yes, praise the Lord.
Can we get the vote, please?
I was just going to say, Gary, can you give us just a little bit of a timeframe on, you know, what's going on?
Well, it's a three-month construction project. It's going to take a while to get the contract processed and signed. But they they have to have it open by the, before school starts.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ah.
Aye.
Motion pass.
And I'm also requesting approval for Resolution Number 2021-101-R, authorizing an agreement for the installation of a temporary traffic signal, the cost of $85,000, or the intersection of Town Madison Boulevard and the interstate ramp. The engineering and police department have been getting together to try to figure out how we're going to do traffic patrol for Trash Panda games. And at the same time, consider the impact that opening up that ramp is going to have on that intersection. And both of us feel very uncomfortable with the traffic conditions there without some kind of signal. And this will put an operating signal in place and keep it there until a permanent signal is determined to be built.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have something to say. This particular traffic light situation, it is listed as part of the constructed infrastructure in the funding agreement. That's Exhibit B by contract, Article 6. They, that these should have been in place as of April 1st, 2020. But why is this funding request for a temporary traffic signal being presented to us tonight?
Like I say, there's a concern with engineering and track, police department that there's a safety issue here for the traveling public. And we're, we've got the opportunity to get a signal in before the first Trash Panda game. I understand that it is a Town Madison funding agreement construction project. But the promised delivery of this signal at the start of last season wasn't met, and it's still not met. And there's no way that they will order their signal through the normal process and get it installed in time. Now, there is some backdoor discussions going on. But in order to, in my opinion, safeguard the traveling public, I don't, quite honestly, don't care what the funding agreement is. I'm looking more at the public safety. If we can get Town Madison to do something and open up by Trash Panda's first game, great.
I understand the safety issue, I really do. And I understand the time is of the essence. But I do not understand why it's us that has to resolve it if it is in their contract. I am just having a really tough time with it.
And I don't have an answer for that.
I thought there's a couple of things on it, too. Is, one, we can't force him to spend his money. And we've ran into this part. He's funding that whole deal. So to make him, to make Mr. Breland spend money that's out of his pocket is a hard, is a hard road to hoe. I mean, we've been dealing with it. And to make somebody say, you have to spend your money, I don't, we haven't figured out how to do that yet. And if you look at it, too, it's all, the city's paying all of it back anyway. So either we can pay for it and not pay interest on it. I wish we had paid for every bit of it, not paying any interest at all. So we're going to either pay for it one time and be done with it or allow Mr. Breland to spend his money on it. And then we're on 20-year interest cycle on something we could pay cash for. So I don't necessarily seen it as a negative. I wish we could pay for everything out there, not pay any interest on it.
It's temporary, but it can be temporary for 20, 30 years. So it's a wood-supported, strand-supported signal system. It'll be good for a long time.
So it's functional and that's what it is.
That's correct. And if a permanent signal, but when I say permanent, I'm saying a mast arm type signal is put in its place, at least half of this cost is equipment that will be rolled into Public Works inventory. So it's reusable, a lot of salvage value.
If we were to order one of these today, how long?
On a mast arm signal, it takes up to a year. This is a wood-supported, everything is standard equipment that's pulled off the yard. They have it in the inventory.
What does a permanent traffic signal cost?
It can cost 300 to 350,000.
And when Gary says we're working in backdoor, backdoor sounds like we're doing something wrong. We're working to utilize mast poles that are the cities that were up on Highway 72 that could be used and most likely would fit appropriately when a little bit of adjustment is made at that Town Madison intersection, which would minimize that $350,000 cost dramatically. What we can't right now make happen and guarantee is that it would be in place for day one of baseball. And so tonight's approval gives us, make sure that from an insurance standpoint, we are covered in making sure that we're as safe as we possibly can be for those games. We're still going to work diligently to try to, and it's working with the Town Madison team that understands, and Karen, there is no good answer from a city standpoint on your question. We, the developer simply chose not to move forward with that. So we, we're in a position now where we're simply making sure we do what we can from a public safety standpoint on an interim basis. They have, now that they recognize the significance of how this looks, stepped up and are trying to figure out how to work with the city to do this in a minimal, a cost that's minimal to both the city and in turn would not be something that we find use. But there isn't a good answer to your question. And in this case, we just simply are making the best of a situation that we're in right now.
Mayor Finlin, may I ask a question for clarification? Um, this would then reduce the amount of money that we would have to pay Mr. Breland back. It would come off the total. Correct?
It doesn't go on the total. It's not that it comes off the total. It doesn't come off, it doesn't go on the total.
I just want to make sure we're not paying him twice.
Oh, we're not paying.
We're not paying for it twice.
We haven't paid for it. This has not been paid for at all.
I just want to make sure that, you know, it is very clear that we're not going to pay for this and then pay him back for this in the future. This is going to be the cost.
That is, you know, that is absolutely the case. Another example, and if you want, it would be the parking lot. You know, there was a square that was left. You know, that was going to be somewhere in the 500 to 600,000 range. We would have, if he would have moved forward and paid for that out of his money, that we would pay back. When that wasn't done in time for what the Trash Panda team needed to have the Christmas extravaganza, which was a big revenue generator for both them and us, Public Works stepped in, stepped up to what they had previously done, did not only that, but also the gravel across the street, which is for the overflow parking at the tune of less than 346, so half about what it would cost to do that. And it came and we paid for it. So we don't have to pay not any money that he's already spent that we have to pay him back. And we did it for half the cost.
So in the long run, this will be a cheaper option for the city. It's not the most convenient, it's not the way we planned it. But in the long run, the city will come out financially a little bit ahead.
Yeah, the question that Karen asked, which is very fair, is why are we dealing with this? We asked ourselves that many times, but we are. And then in turn, we want to make sure that our citizens coming off that ramp and anybody coming to that game or Town Madison feels safe and can get to and from where they want to be.
Safety is paramount. I understand that. This is still only a temporary thing. So it's not a matter of, it's $85,000, which I would love to spend on a sidewalk, you know, instead of having to do this because he chose not to. But he has this agreement. He agreed to front the cost and then be paid back with the tax money that comes in. So it never really comes out of us. It just comes out of the tax revenue that comes in. And he takes the tax revenue off of property taxes, alcohol taxes. There are many things. So I guess I really am concerned that we continue to say, okay, you didn't have to pay for it. We'll just go ahead and do this again. And that's just kind of where I stand on it. Thank you.
Hey, Gary, while you're up here, could you address the citizen's suggestion about a roundabout versus a traffic light at that particular place? Why one works and one doesn't?
If it had been designed to begin with, it may have been fine. A roundabout at that location would have required a multi-lane roundabout. I don't know that we're ready for multi-lane roundabout when we are already.
From our town hall.
That's right. So, and again, we're trying to meet a deadline or what will be an opening day event.
Right.
And the roundabout would be a good year away to design and construct one, plus substantially more money than that. Had it been done up front, a different consideration. But it just wasn't considered at the time of design.
Okay, and I don't know if this is for you or the mayor, but, so we're not ordering a $300,000 traffic light, a permanent light, knowing it's a year out that we could even get one. We're trying to figure out how to put a light that we have on a pole that we may have access to?
We're following two routes right now.
Okay.
The firm route that I'm promoting and asking approval for is where we would contract with Shoals Electric to engage in installing a wood-supported, strand-supported, signalized intersection. I'm calling it temporary, but it would be up there for 30, 40, 50 years. Most people would not consider a wood pole signal to be a permanent signal. And at the same time, there are some negotiations going on in the background where we do have spare parts from various signals that have been taken down and modified in the past and trying to see if we can piece together a signal. But that is something that another group is driving. All I can do is drive what I figure I can accomplish.
Sure.
And if the other side comes up and says, here's what we can do, and here's the commitment, then we wouldn't have to place this order. And we would get a mast arm signal up there.
Okay.
Gary, in that Plan B, who's doing the analysis, stamping off the P E? That?
Town Madison actually designed a signal for that intersection. So there is a design that they would be pulling the parts together for, to accomplish the design. So the P E would be Mullins LLC, Jeff Mullins. No, I'm sorry, it was Croy Engineering did the design for the signal.
I mean, if they use a pole though from somewhere else, I mean, does there not have to be some kind of?
There has to be questions raised on whether or not that pole is adequate for the condition it's being put under and the weights of the equipment and the length of the arm. All of that has to be evaluated. The foundation has to be designed for the pole. It has to be put in place. It's a slower process.
But they would be, Croy would be signing off.
Somebody else other than the city should be signing up on that.
Aye.
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 Aye. Nay.
Motion pass. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next up is planning.
The first item is Resolution 2021-95-R. This is an agreement with Madison Utilities related to water line improvements that are, were required by Madison Utilities in association with the Home Place Park Project, basically having to redo a water line in Shorter Street. And the amount is $54,885. And basically, Madison Utilities pays the city a franchise fee every year. This, they would just, this agreement reduces the franchise fee that they would be paying the city by this amount.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I get the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Ah.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Next item is Resolution 2021-85-R. This is to set a public hearing on a rezoning request. This property is just under 1.7 acres. It'll appear before you magically in a moment. There we are. It's at the southwest corner of Walter Anna and Gillespie. The property is currently zoned R4, which is our multifamily zoning. The applicant, property owner, is requesting to rezone it to B2, which you can see on the surrounding, the other three corners. The Planning Commission is recommending approval as a staff. And we are asking you to set the public hearing for the end of April.
Move to approve and set the public hearing?
Motion and second. Any discussion? I have to vote, please.
Aye.
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 Motion pass.
Thank you. Your next item is Ordinance Number 2021-25. This is for the annexation of the property in Morris Estates on Dove Drive that you just had the zoning rehearing, zoning hearing for. And the Planning Commission and staff are recommending annexation of the property. It is consistent with the growth policy, Policy Number 7, which supports annexation of properties that are under three acres.
Motion and second. Any discussion? I have to vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Ah.
Motion pass.
And the last item for planning is Ordinance Number 2021-24. This is the other annexation request for the single-family lot. This one on 207 Stella Drive. And again, it is consistent with the growth policy. And Planning Commission and staff are recommending approval.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Can we get the vote, please?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cor, you're on deck.
He's on deck, he's up.
He's up, you up?
Got the plate.
Revenue's on deck.
Good evening. I have Resolution 2021-93-R, authorizing a professional services agreement with G-Tech to dismantle the air-supported structure in Dublin Park in the amount of $16,300.
Motion pass.
Tackin.
Motion and second. Any discussion? What are they going to do there, Cor?
We're planning April 5th through the 9th, but I need three consecutive dry days. Imagine putting away a wet, a wet-fitted sheet.
That'd be good.
Very large one.
I watch them fold that thing up.
They get it on two pallets, believe it or not.
Unbelievable. Any other discussion?
These are the sign guys we use every year.
No, the previous contractors we used were out of St. Louis. They actually manufactured that. They're trying to get out of that business. This was the engineer that designed. This was the engineer that designed the base of the structure. So he had, and he was there when it was put in, and after several discussions, he feels he can get a crew and do that after watching it being done a few times. So cross our fingers. It's local.
For show tickets.
Yeah, when we used to do it. It's interesting. But he's local, so the three dry days, if I don't get them, it's not like I'm paying a hotel bill for somebody to stay here when it's raining.
Reason I was asking, I mean, we do this, what, once you're back down, once you're?
Put it up every six months, yeah.
I don't know if you, and obviously I think they're, I'm just thinking long-term. You had a guarantee service, you might even get a discount. If they knew they were getting six of these, there's a, might be a quantity discount.
I think, I think they're just trying to cover their costs, because I think they gotta, you know, they don't have that many employees, so they gotta hire a temp agency and all that kind of stuff, yeah. That's a question I could ask them.
I get the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Ah.
The motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Core. Next up is revenue.
All right, thank you, sir. The revenue department has one item on the agenda tonight. We've got a request from Ball Chorus Food and Beverage LLC doing business with Trash Panda Ketering. They're requesting a special retail license less than 30 days for the area of the parking lot that's kind of outlined there, a 500 trash panda weight. What they're gonna be doing is handling the alcohol sales in connection with the fair that's going to be taking place there April 8th through the 18th. The council also sets the terms and conditions. What they've requested is from 3:00 to 10:00 on weeknights and from 1:00 p.m. till 11:00 p.m. on weekends. And there are representatives with Ball Chorus here if there's any additional questions.
Move to approve.
Got a motion in a second. Is there, is there any discussion?
Does that mean it's gonna go to 11? Alcohol at 11 o'clock? Yes.
But then the fair's probably open a little bit longer, too. It probably closes at mid-9.
And I don't know. We just wanna give them time to celebrate.
Put everyone on the Ferris wheel.
So basically, from the back, what I heard is while it's 3:00 to 10:00 and 1:00 to 11:00, that you guys would quit selling alcohol about an hour before those two times. You're just giving yourself a little bit of a buffer just in case. Okay.
All right, motion in a second. Can we get the vote, please?
Aye.
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 Ah.
And motion passed. And now we got legal.
Good evening. I have two items for your consideration. The first one is Resolution 2021-92-R. This authorizes a change order with Republic Services for the city's agreement with them for bulk trash collection. And of course, bulk trash collection is picking up yard waste, appliances, mattresses, furniture, big bulky items. The contractor signed up with the city for this agreement in 2017. But with the pandemic this past year, their costs increased a lot because of stay-at-home orders. Everybody was home, they're recondoing their places and putting out so much more waste. And so their costs went up a lot when it came to labor and fuel, et cetera. So they approached us a few weeks ago and said, hey, you know, the terms of this contract are not working for us anymore. We'd like to give notice that we intend to terminate within the next year, and they do have to give a six-month notice. So we've discussed with them the timing of that. They also asked for help recuperating costs. So what we're proposing to you all tonight is that for the remainder of the year, the city bump up the cost, the maximum the bid law will allow, which is 10%. So from $8.16 per household to $8.98 per household. And that, of course, is billed to consumers through Athens and Huntsville Utilities. So there's also a nominal fee. So consumers will see a little bit more than that on their bills. And then the second part of this is we're asking for authorization to rebid the contract and have that ready for you all to award, either to this contractor under financial terms that do work for them or to another contractor that can handle this contract. And we need that authorization now, but because we're a very big contract like this, companies need a lot of lead-up time because they have to get enough staff and enough trucks to be able to handle the load in Madison. So that's what we're asking for tonight with this resolution. And then Kent is here from an operations and public works standpoint, in case you have questions about how things have been going with Republic and how this works in general. And then I'm here for any questions about the agreement.
So after six months, could it feasibly go back to the current price?
Easily, yes, because it will be competitively bid. And so we're gonna reach out to a number of contractors who do this type of work, who were interested in this contract back in 2017. And we'll go through the competitive process, and then, you know, hopefully by then, things will have gotten back to normal. And so, yes, it's absolutely possible that the price could go down.
Thank you. Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Can we get the vote, please?
Aye.
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 Aye. Ah.
Motion passed.
Right, and the second item I have for your consideration is Resolution 2021-96-R. And this is a resolution to award the bid for janitorial services at the Madison Public Library to Janice King of Huntsville. The cost for this is $4,175 per month, and it's paid out of the library services budget that the city maintains because the public library is a city-owned building. And by awarding this agreement, we'll actually be saving $600 per month over the previous contract. And I'd like to ask for your approval this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any new discussion?
I just wanted to add that they may be listed as a Huntsville business, but they're actually located in Madison, really close to Old Time Pottery. So they're Madison residents, Madison locally owned.
Awesome, and they handled window cleaning for us a few weeks.
Yes, yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. Ah.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous business or?